I'll go ahead and call this meeting to an end. I do believe we do have a quorum. All six of us are here. So, at this time, invocation. Mr. Richardson, I will take it.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for another day that we can come together. Thank you for a beautiful day. We just pray that you give us wisdom and direction as we make decisions that affect the district. We pray that we keep children's best interests and their education at the forefront of all that we do. Just be here among us as we make decisions tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Okay. Pledge of allegiance. Mr. Rivers, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, approve the minutes. The minutes that we're talking about tonight are February the 4th during the meeting, February the 28th, board retreat, and March the 4th. Are there any corrections or additions to these minutes? May I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So, wait.
Motion second. Second. Need for the discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Discussion adjustment of the agenda.
Yes, sir. I understand this evening, there is an adjustment to our agenda.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if it pleases you, I'd like to add a first read of our policy 4327, draft drug prevention policy. I'd like to pass hard copy out to members.
Okay. First read. We need a vote to adjust or amend the agenda. Is there a motion to adjust the agenda? We have a motion. And we have a second. Need for the discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Yes, sir. And where did we say this was going to be on the agenda?
It's going to be under health and safety.
Health and safety.
Yes, sir. This is drug prevention.
Great. Health and safety. All right. Did you hear that, Mr. Rivers?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, next item is our consent items. You see those listed? I think we talked a little bit about in terms of efficiency of the board meetings to try to get more items under the consent agenda, i.e. like travel and those kind of things. So, you see the listed consent items? Do I have a motion to approve them?
So, wait.
Motion, is there a second? Second. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, consent items are approved. Right. Special recognitions.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, if whatever's... Would please join me, the red carpet.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, it's my pleasure to introduce some very special students and employees and adults from our community. First, we were going to recognize a young man who was the champion of our spelling bee, but I don't believe he's here yet. So, let's just hold that until the end and see if he gets a chance to come. So, at this time, we will move on to our next student, Ms. Reagan Bowman. Reagan is a ninth-grade student at Granville Central High School, and she has received the honor of being selected to serve as a Senate age for the North Carolina General Assembly Summer of 2019. We are so proud of her. This highly competitive process has been stowed upon Reagan, and when I was talking to her outside, I mentioned it, is she going to be a future governor? And she said, "Sure." So, we are very, very proud of her. Congratulations. All right. Still no spelling bee champ just yet? We will move on then to the adults. First, we would like to recognize two members of our technology team, Dr. Vanessa Rinn and Mr. Kevin Lawler. Come on forward. We are so proud of them. Their perseverance and expertise should be commended for making our board meetings video cataloged and indexed on Board Docs. So, now we have the capacity to go in and see our board meetings completely online, videotaped and indexed by content area, and also with closed captioning, which is a legal requirement that was a big hurdle for them to overcome. So, we thank them so much for their work on this. All right. Next, we would like to congratulate Ms. Amy Lou and Ms. Dana King. Ms. Dana King is absent. So, Ms. Lou, come on in. I referenced the spelling bee, the Granville County Public Schools' second annual spelling bee could not have been made possible without the hard work and expertise of Ms. Lou and Ms. King. They single-handedly pulled it off and had a spectacular event that night. So, we are grateful for all you did to help our children on that special evening. So, thank you. All right. Well, we'll see if we can recognize Joel Joss, who is a fifth grader, correct, at CG Cradle? Third grader, third grader. Wow! Even more impressive, third grader. He is the district champion for the spelling bee, and if you were there that night, you would have been truly impressed by his performance and his sharp spelling abilities. So, yeah, it was wonderful.
Mr. Winborn, do you know what the last word was that he had to spell?
Dr. Mark was a judge. He might remember.
I think it's...
Yeah?
Sumo.
Sumo.
Sumo. That's U-H-M-O. What is it? What is it?
Like a wrestler.
Like a wrestler.
Oh, wrestler! Oh, okay. I thought it was something exotic or whatever.
Joel's principal and his teacher and the counselor or social worker are here tonight to congratulate him. So, we thank you guys for coming.
Joel is on his way to the national spelling bee competition. So, he is preparing right now to win that thing. This is only the second year we've done it in Granville County, but we are so proud Joel is representing us. So, just wanted to share that.
Third grader, no less.
Third grade. Beat everyone out.
For this celebration team, actually. We could have used him.
Not bragging, but Cradle won the celebration junior too.
That's...
Not bragging, though. You better brag on your school.
That concludes our recognition for tonight.
Okay. Public address at this time. Mr. Winborn may be connecting. Public address.
No one has signed up for poll comment tonight. Mr. Chair.
Superintendent's report.
Yes. Good evening, everyone, and happy spring. It's beautiful out. Mr. Chair, Board of Education members, staff, guests, and friends, please forgive my voice this evening. I don't know what it is, but we're going to get this report. We have had a wonderful month of growing, competing, and learning since we last met. Design teams for both Webb High School and Mary Potter are well underway. Schools participated in this year's celebration just last week, and we appreciate the work of our Granville Ed Foundation. I would like to thank Mr. Udi, Mr. Rivers, and Mrs. Mims for being our representatives on the board, and Tharnton and Smith for paying for our participation. May we give them a round of applause. They made it around three, and I'd like to thank the cheerleaders. I had the pleasure of sitting with Mr. Mims, Mrs. Rivers, Dr. Winborn, and myself were the cheerleaders for our board. It was a fun event. Our CTE Advisory Council has met and determined plans for making this community even stronger in the area of economic development and in the school-to-work pipeline. We also partnered with the Chamber since we last met and had a wonderful lunch and learn showcasing our work keys in CTE. In fact, we had an awesome virtual enterprise day at Webb this past Friday as well. In addition, an incredible fifth and eighth-grade truck pair. We are so proud to have had our second spelling bee, and tomorrow, as well as on April 4th, our school district will host our very first Family Code Night. This is for the entire community. Please come out and support, but more than that, learn about coding. This is something students will need as they progress for our district. Flyers are at the door and in your folders for those who might be interested. As we continue our safety initiatives, I'm pleased to announce that we had a very successful Saturday. We trained our educators to be first responders. I'd like to thank Mr. Udi and our entire safety task force for that effort. We partnered with Granville Health Systems. Duke Medical Facility came. All of our law enforcement agencies were represented, and emergency management. It was certainly a moment we are proud of. We have a lunch and learn coming with Mr. Keith Poston, April 8th at 11:00 a.m. on equity issues. Please bring your lunch, come right here to this room, and see where we might be with equity as it relates to Granville County public schools. Last week, we also had Battle of the Books, and we had some winners. All across our district, we're extremely proud of Northern Granville Middle School, and I believe, was it Cradle? Tar River this time. All right, Tar River Elementary. Without further ado, ladies and gentlemen, I'm proud to announce for the first time, and after years of work, that our Board of Education meetings, as you've heard, are now videoed and indexed, so you don't have to watch the entire meeting. You go online, and you will be able to see what you'd like to see through Board Docs. I asked Dr. Vanessa Rinn, will you join me? It's time to unveil our new technology.
Yes, I'm sure. Board members, if you log into Board Docs online, we will just show you where to click. Let Mr. Winborn drive that. We're not going to do lessons, but we do want people to see. I just want you to see where to go to look at the board meetings.
Let's see, March 4th meeting?
Yes. March 4th. And you see what Dr. Winborn just did? Clicking the last meeting, click March 4th, and there you are. You can see the board meetings online. It's the entire meeting, and you can skip down to parts of the agenda, and it'll go take you to that part of the video. So, just so you know exactly how to access that component.
We are on the move in Granville County.
And if you want to see the closed captioning, you click the CC icon right there in the middle, and that will pull up the closed caption component. But the audio is there, and we are working on a plan now to make the audio even stronger. In about eight weeks, the audio will be direct fed into the camera. So, it'll come from your mics to the camera, so we won't have to worry about proximity in the room like we do now. Mr. Lawler, anything you would add to that?
Nope.
That easy, there it is.
It really was that simple.
So, you can go viral now, board members.
We are proud, ladies and gentlemen. This is a big deal. Many districts are doing this, but many are not, and they're striving to have the capacity, and that is why we honor our tech team tonight. We are proud of our capacity to do this. Several memos are in your folder, ladies and gentlemen. The GCPS perspective teacher, we will be talking about that. I believe we have a little addition to make there. Stausch is there. The technology one-to-one in middle school, you'll find information on that in your folder from our last meeting, and the real estate property of the nation is in your folder. Finally, tonight, it is very important to everyone that we understand academics and safety are top priorities, but the character of our children, making them good people above all, is extremely important. So, I invite you to join us for our very first Night of Kindness. It is scheduled for April 23rd at 6:30 p.m. at Northern Granville Middle School. Bring your tissue, because the children of today are still some of the most compassionate, beautiful souls you will ever find, and they're ours in Granville County. Have a good evening. This concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Very cool. Thank you. Reports from board members. Anyone have a report? Mr. Udi?
I have one report. I just have four things on the speaker.
Okay.
I've been helping with Mr. Perry going around doing the teach of the year evaluation. And don't forget that first Friday in May is the pig in the blanket. And I didn't hear today, but I believe the tickets are still $50 a person, and you don't have to be present to have your name in the drawing, but we do want you there. And also, I attended the safety first aid class that was at Northern Granville. I thought the biggest part of the class, I hope people got it, was the last class that told you how to go and reach out for help if you have a tragic event that is very traumatic. The last thing is, our safety subcommittee met for the last time, and we have come up with a few things here. First of all, our dissertation policy, there's no change needed. It just needs to be enforced. So, there's nothing we have to bring in for policy change. The backgrounds, the same thing. They just need to follow the procedure. We felt like what they had was good. And then the other one was the drop-off and pickup. So, we're hoping these things here that I read out will be done consistent now across the county, the elementary schools, and this is the golden effect at the beginning of the school year. Twenty-five minutes prior to the tardy bell, there'll be a window for parents to begin allowing students to enter the building, either to eat breakfast or go to their designated holding area in the school. All parents can either use the kiss-and-go or park-and-go during this time. A kiss-and-go means they drop them off. Parking go means they walk in. After tardy bells, parents must sign students in the office. Students who are not accompanied by a parent will receive a mandatory phone call. The principal may receive assistance from the SRO to contact the parent. After the first two weeks, parents may no longer accompany students to their classrooms in the mornings. Pickup. All parents who are picking up students in the car line should have a card or tag in their vehicle to identify them as an approved pickup vehicle. Staff members with radios should be present in the areas. No parents are allowed to exit vehicles in the pickup line. All children must be capable of buckling themselves in the pickup line. No pickup prior to 30 minutes before release of school. And adults must show photo ID if they're not on the contact list or haven't got an approval from parents or guardians. Now, these are all procedures or just guidelines. So, what they're going to do is each principal is going to be responsible to get it in their books they hand out to the kids and parents this summer, and then they will implement it starting at the beginning of school. And we had one question that we could not answer that we thought was more for the attorney. If you have a child under the age of eight years old suspended, the parent refuses to follow the policies on the suspension, they drop the child off at school and leave, what is their next? What can they do?
So, certainly, we always have to put the child's safety first. So, my understanding is the general procedure would be to first try to contact the parent. When that doesn't work, then often have the SRO drive the child home. I understand that then the question is, if the parent is also not at home. And, you know, at that point, the first plus use their judgment about, I know they're not going to leave the child there, about how to maintain that child safely in the building. And if this is a recurring problem, I know that they have, you know, they can seek assistance either from social services or law enforcement. I would hope that it doesn't get to that point without there already being some sort of intervention, because it would seem something large going on in that situation. Does that make sense?
But it does.
Okay.
I know that you can't leave a child eight years younger at home by themselves.
And I don't know that you would leave an eight-year-old or nine-year-old child by themselves.
Well, that, I guess that would be...
I don't...
Depending on the maturity of the child. I wouldn't, but I'm just saying, I think the state also has dangers. So, this actually happened to a principal. They just didn't know what to do, so they allowed the child in school.
That's what makes sense.
But Dr. Winborn, when you have a parent that, and this is not a question, just a thought, when you have a parent that refuses to follow the suspension, what do we do? I'd like to just sound a little loud. It's just, don't be an answer right now.
That is happening. It happens unfortunately, nor do we like, and that is when we reach out and bring this off, try to set up a group of those parents, just want them to prove seriousness.
Dr. Winborn, do you think you're responsible for contacting the principal?
Well, yes, sir. Or maybe I would.
So, we can officially dissolve the subcommittee. You are through. Very good. You are officially dissolved. All right. Other, yes, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Since last meeting, I've visited several more schools in the South County, and the point I would like to make is that I expressed an interest in our changing of social workers, school social workers, and our mental health challenges. What is interesting is that the mental health challenges seem to vary very dramatically from campus to campus. And I was just, Dr. McLean, just want to maybe suggest at some point, if we can, you know, hire some more social workers, we try to understand why some campuses seem to be having more issues. And I'm wondering if maybe there is a kernel of students who might recruit others and cause these higher numbers, or what it might be. But certainly, and I won't mention names, but two schools in the South County, which we know elementary schools are fairly close to each other, and we hate to think of mental health issues in elementary schools, but one, just several miles from the other, had some very significant numbers of mental health issues. The other one had very, very low numbers. So, yeah, I was very surprised. So, I just, you probably worry that, but for the board, I just, I'm sort of interested why we're having this kind of fluctuation. We've seen that with most schools, from north and south, and in the south. So, it's just, it's just interesting why we're having these fluctuating numbers from campus to campus, both in the same area. Second thing was, I attended the Webb's 19th trip to Raleigh. Dr. Mark, I believe, and I saw Ms. Salisbury and Principal Rice from Webb, and then their student, some other adults in their student design team. To me, the most interesting thing was the first school we visited, which was, it was a, was it a magnet school?
No, it was a, like an early college.
That's right.
Early college campus.
That's right. It was an early college, but they had, I believe, five or so separate academies, or what they may not have called academies, but we tend to think as academies. Everything from, I believe, computer programming to restaurant, hotel restaurant management type situations. And the curricula was designed around those academies, so that to be in an academy, you had certain academic situations you had to make. But at any rate, that was, I thought, probably interesting, as I know that I truly have been interested in the academies concept. But that was, to me, the highlight of the trip.
Did you, when you say academies, are you talking about a school of 800 kids, or there'd be kid somewhere in an academy, or a group of academies and then other students in the general population? How was that organized?
To my recollection, Dr. Mark, or Ms. Salisbury, please chime in if I'm wrong, to my understanding was, there was, as he said, an early college campus. And they were working, but it could still apply to high school. They were working in conjunction with the Wade County Community College, but the, every student on that campus, I believe, had to actually apply to academies.
They only had 400 students there, and they had to agree to go into one of the three areas, which was emergency management, I believe, the culinary arts one, you mentioned, and it was one of the business, computer technology, sciences, something like that. Then they had their regular high school classes, the first freshman, sophomore year, then the junior, senior year. They took those classes to the community college that were taught at...
And that's an early college.
And they had to apply, I understand, was they actually applied, and they were, you know, they were, there were certain criteria, and there was a waiting list, and, but basically, I think it was performance-driven, so it took, to some aspect, if you, if you applied from middle school, say, to Culinary Arts Academy, you may have to have a certain GPA or maybe rank in... So, they did that, plus there was a hybrid, performance-based, and then some lottery, correct? It was kind of a hybrid model. But anyway, you applied to the academy, and you were there for as long as you could, and see what we go back to break this.
Good. Are there any other trips being planned? Oh, excuse me. Are there any other trips, any other places to look at besides where you went? Yes.
No, not at this time. We did visit another high school that day, and we also visited the Hunt Library. But in terms of trips, no, we're not planning any additional trips. They have developed a server that will go up to all the parents and students at the school, and some, and their community partners at the school. So, they ignore that, at least, when I sometimes just...
Just one thing, and then I'll turn to you, Mr. Mims. Remember, when this happened, when the School of Health and Life Sciences was closed, it was very clear that there was going to be a plan, and academies came up. I just want to make sure that I'm on the record saying that we will not start school at Webb in two years, doing it the same way we're doing it now.
We are following a timeline, and I believe we're going to come to the board with the plan in August.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mims?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to mention, it's already been mentioned about the district spelling bee at Tar River Elementary School. I had a chance to attend that district spelling bee, and that wasn't really my first rodeo. And to that end, I also would like to acknowledge the work that Ms. King and Ms. Lou provide, because basically annually, and I'm not sure how many years Ms. King has basically pronounced the words for the spellings, but they do a, you know, they do a tremendous job. Also, I would like to thank our tech group for the video, because as a public entity, I think we are one of the few in Granville County that has this video of their meetings available now, and probably the first that has it laid out in the format that we saw today. And I think this will go a long way in keeping the community not only connected, but informed about what is going on with the Board of Education. So, kudos for your well-done. And speaking of kudos, it didn't take you long, so I know you must have had it, but And speaking of kudos, it didn't take you long, so I know you must have had it, but I'm truly appreciative of this list of real estate and land that is owned by the Board of Education. I think this will help inform each board member about the assets or the resources that we have as we look forward, and I intend to study that pretty closely. And finally, I just want to thank Mr. Udi, and for those of you, and I know Dr. Wimbourn was a member of the subcommittee, but for those of you who didn't get a chance to drop in and see how he, he led the Safety Subcommittee, not only did he do a very efficient job, but I think the principals and everybody who was involved left understanding the consistency that exists at our elementary schools with the way they handle the students. So I just want to publicly thank Mr. Udi for an outstanding job.
All right, thank you. Okay. Couple things, reports. First of all, the liaison committee met this past month, and we wanted to, as we promised, to give you an update. Most of the time, we spent discussing budget. Surprise. And there were no commitments from the, from the two, which of course they couldn't anyway, but about direction and funding and all that good stuff. We emphasized to them that we're in the middle of developing the budget, and that that will be coming in the appropriate timeframe. And also made sure that it was very clear that the request of ongoing funding for items that are currently being funded, like salary increases and things of those nature, how critical it was that we get that. I think we've gotten that in the budget the last two years. Prior to that, it was not necessarily there, so we really, because if they don't fund that, we're in, we're in serious, serious, whatever. And then a little discussion on facilities, kind of an update on facilities, where we were. It was not a particularly long meeting. It was one of those meetings that, you know, could or could not have happened kind of thing. And we got in, talked budget, talked facilities, and then dismissed after lunch. So the second thing I want to mention, you've got in the, as an attachment in the, this particular item, a memo that I sent to you after last, last month's meeting, and two things. First of all, the idea of dissolving the current committee structure and using the format that has proven to be very effective, Mr. Udi's Safety Subcommittee, and now Mr. Rivers' Drug Committee Subcommittee. So what we will do in the future is, as an issue comes up, as a topic, as something that needs to be further explored, and a recommendation back to the board, we'll create those as needed on an as-needed basis. And the other thing about it is that in an effort to help us kind of get focused on our jobs related to being board members in meetings, we're going to change the agenda and the format for the agenda, and focus around three overall areas, which are areas that the board statutorily has the process worked out, and that is personnel, policy, and a budget. So we'll be doing that, and we'll see how that rolls out, and see how that goes. Okay? All right, we'll move on to academic success. A presentation of CATCH.
Absolutely. I'd like to invite this evening, Dr. Myrick, Ms. Lindsay Binkers-Bott, with the help that she is our presentation supervisor, and Samuel Hodge, and his select members. They have been working with our schools the past year. Or members, you may remember, a year ago, you asked that our schools prepare themselves to be healthy active schools. And in that work, they've had to develop professional development, and teach about brain breaks and all kinds of things. So welcome, Ms. Lindsay Bott.
Good evening, thanks for having me. I'm going to start us off, and then I'm going to welcome Dr. Samuel Hodge to join me. We'll piece this together, we know you have a lot ahead of you, but we wanted to highlight two different things in our short little period of time. So to begin, I wanted to highlight that Grahamville Vance Public Health, which is the health district that serves both Grahamville and Vance Counties, just completed its community health assessment. That is a process that happens every three to four years, and so the last time we shared this was in 2016. And so a number of members of the schools, the district office, community members, teachers, family members have participated in this process. I wanted to report to you. So there are three main community health priorities that we have identified as a result of the community health assessment. The first one is mental health and substance use disorder. And I wanted to highlight in particular that drug abuse was listed as the number one issue affecting the quality of life in the Community Health Opinion Survey, which is actually the survey we do door-to-door for residents across the county. So that is something, I think you've already mentioned this, evening being an issue, and showed up as the most important and actionable health issue when we compare different health topics amongst each other for the community health assessment. Also, for the first time, we've identified youth well-being as a community health priority. So that's a broad area, so I wanted to highlight two things in particular for this group. For the first time, we asked community members and stakeholders about adverse childhood experiences, and you can see that 76% of respondents in Grahamville County said that that was something they felt like the Health Department should be doing as a priority area for our work. We already know that we're doing work along with the school district in that area, but we wanted to share that that's something that the community is supporting and seeing more of. We also asked a specific question about health issues that impact children in school, and challenges that they might be facing. And so we wanted to let you know that bullying was cited as the biggest school health challenge facing folks. That's from individual community members bringing that to the list amongst a variety of other health topics. And then the last community health priority, which is really inextricably linked with the first two, is access to healthcare. So we saw, it's not so much that people don't feel like there's services here, but the ability for people to equally access those services, the number of services that are available related to mental health and substance use, the number of services that are available for children and other subpopulations that are most dependent on specialty care are some of the things that people are concerned about. In particular, the high cost of healthcare, even when people have insurance, is something that we're concerned about. So these are the top three health issues that we are going to be focused on in terms of funding, and staffing, and looking for additional resources from the Health Department. We also are going to think about these three issues with a couple of lenses, which is not new, but we wanted to make sure that you all were aware that these are things that really rose to the surface in terms of the data that's out there. In terms of, we cannot think about mental health and substance use, about youth well-being, or access to healthcare without thinking about poverty and how it impacts families and children in the area. So that's something that will just be on lens that we're thinking about these health issues on. Also, health equity, the access to health for all people is something that we're explicitly addressing in the community health assessment. So that is something that we're thinking about children versus adults, versus older adults, but also different racial and ethnic backgrounds, other different demographic characteristics that might make it harder or easier for certain individuals to access care or receive different health information that's important to them. And the last thing that we're focusing on is social determinants or drivers of health, things like where you live, the green space that's available, the transportation, the food that's in a grocery store, or the gas station that you're, you're getting the food from. And so those are some of the lenses that we are thinking about these top health issues in relation to. The full document is available on the Grahamville Vance Public Health website. If you click through on the first slide of the slides that are provided this evening, it takes you directly to that page. There's also 197 pages of appendices, if you're interested in specific data on any of these topic areas. But for the moment, we'll stick with the three minutes. But we did want to dive in, as Dr. McLean mentioned, as a specific follow-up of the work that we've been doing around CATCH, the Coordinated Approach to Child Health. A year ago, we received your endorsement to implement the program in all of the elementary schools, and so we wanted to share a little bit about how that's been going. So if you'll recall, we had initially trained staff in three elementary schools prior to this academic year, and so now we train an additional 85 principals, teachers, and staff. We have some people in the audience who did good catch and follow, and yoga, and learning things about physical activity breaks in a way that was really fun over the summer. And so we do now have all nine elementary schools within the district implementing CATCH. We've also been able to offer some mini-grant support to five of the schools that are participating through some of the funds that we have through Healthy People, Healthy Carolinas, and then initiative of the Duke Endowment. So we've been able to do things like install water fountains, get some outdoor playground equipment, think about things like a walking classroom, or going into the pre-k setting. And we are doing some evaluations to kind of see how that's going. We also learned a place that we might be able to pilot a middle school advancement, because right now, we're just thinking about it, kindergarten through fifth grade, so we wanted to put that idea out there, as there might be middle schools that are interested. But I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Samuel Hodge to share a little bit about the evaluation, and wrap this up.
Thanks, Lindsay.
Want the podium?
No. You don't mind, I'll just stand here, because that way I won't have my back to you. So essentially, what I'm going to do in one minute is tell you about the first school that piloted CATCH, and that's Stovall-Shawn. And so with that school, one of the things we did is we tried to measure whether it was effective or not. Because we know this program works, but the question is, the way we're doing it, is it still working? And so we did some early measures. And you can see here, after just two years of implementation, what we found is that physical activity behaviors are improving. The school now has a walking trail, and that's been used by both the students and the staff. And we measured fitness scores, and we measured things like a shuttle run, push-ups and sit-ups. And we found that those measures of fitness, the sit-ups in particular, improved significantly over that two-year period, so that's really good. Screen time is a matter of physical inactivity, and so we measured that as well. And the recommendation is for children over five, that no more than two hours a day should be spent watching screens. Right now, at Stovall, about 36% of students exceed that recommendation, but nationally, it's about 46%. So as they are right now, they're better than national, but obviously could be improved, all right? Body weight, and we measured that by measuring a child's weight for their height, okay? And it comes out into this index called a BMI, Body Mass Index. And so what's really good is that we're finding that all the measures are trending downwards healthy weight, which is wonderful. So we're seeing that the weights for good boys and girls, the BMI levels are coming down closer to what would be considered a healthy weight. We've seen decreases, the biggest decrease is in our Hispanic students, and they were at highest risk. They have the highest proportion of children in that high weight for height category. And theirs are coming right down towards a more normal weight. And we saw really big improvements in both first and third graders. And so those top two bullets, top three bullets, those were measured by what we call paired analysis. So the kids that we measured in 2016, we followed them in 2018, and we compared them. So that shows really good results in terms of the trend coming down. But the last bullet, where we look at girls, and the percent of girls in the obesity category dropping from 20 to 17%, that's just all the kids in 2016 and all the kids in 2018 not paired, okay? But all this one slide tells you is that we're doing well. All right, so that's it, I'm done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very, 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 very helpful, and good to know what's going on at Stovall-Shawn when they started their, their magnet program and their choice program. Thank you for what you do, we really appreciate you being involved in the schools.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item?
Yes, let me have the House read out the policy, Dr. Myrick.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This policy, 3410, this is a testing and assessment program. If you look at page two. The highlighted area, in the past, the district has used 25% as the final exam grade for students in high school. However, the state moved to 20% a couple of years ago. And this year, meeting with the high school principals, we discussed that the principals would like to move from a 25% final grade on their EOC as the final exam grade to a 20%, which is in line with what the state recommends, and is also in line with districts that are around us. So what we're asking for is for our exams, the final exams, for any high school exams, count 20% of the students' final grades instead of 25%. That's the first policy. Any questions about...
Any questions, court members?
Yes, sir. So that 5% decrease, where will that 5% move to?
It will move back into the, the regular assessment of the student. And in terms of, we have major grades and minor grades that students are graded on, and that 5% will go back into the major and minor grades instead of being counted as the 25%. They will still get that 5%, but it will be back into the other grade. And we felt like this would be a benefit to the students for several reasons, with the way that they integrate and, you know, trying to find exams and score. And when this, the 25% was put in place, students were required by state to pass or be proficient on the integrated, on the intercourse exams in order to go to the next grade. But they have taken that provision out of the legislation.
Yep, and Mr. Udi?
Since this mirrors the state, do you need a motion on this?
It's, it's first reading.
That's, what do we need a motion on?
We would vote on, we could suspend the second reading and vote on it.
That's right. So I wanted to make a motion first, that we waive first read for second read.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second? We have a second. Any further discussion? All of the favor of the motion to waive? Please say aye.
Aye.
All right, please, all those opposed, motion carries. And Mr. Udi?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the policy code 3410, testing and assessment program.
At the 20%?
Yes, at the 20%.
We have a second? Any further discussion? Would you explain again what Mr. Mims asked? So the, the, reducing the test to 20%, that basically means whatever the teacher has or hasn't been doing will now go up 5%. And I think that's not really the way to say it, but it's...
Essentially, yes. It just means now that the major and minor assignments that the students were graded on during the school year count as 80% of their final grade, rather than 75%.
Okay, good. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. So the next policy speaks directly to some of the innovative things that we have been trying to do in the district this year with Grahamville Academy, and with, also with Grahamville Early College. And with Grahamville Early College, this has not been an issue before, because students that are in health district that attend Grahamville Early College are assigned to their, the school that's based in their attendance zone. However, we found this year, when students want to attend Grahamville Academy that are outside of the district, they are not attached to a school that is part of the, that is recognized by the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. So what we have done, we have researched and found this language that would allow students who are not assigned, who are not residents of Grahamville County, who are not domiciled in this county, to be able to participate in high school athletics by assigning them to a school that's in their attendance zone of Grahamville Academy. And you can just read it, non-resident students admitted under this policy may participate in extracurricular activities including interscholastic athletics, subject to the rules of the North Carolina High School Athletics Association and local eligibility requirements. A 306-day waiting period for interscholastic athletic participation may apply to some transfer students based on the North Carolina High School Athletics Association rules. And we are developing some procedures around that particular piece right there. But if you would go... But if you would go, and we need to look at both policies so that they will make sense to you, the view of thirty-six twenty. And on page thirty, page seven. Page six, athletic eligibility.
Alright, is it E?
E.
Yeah.
So number one, athletic eligibility, eligibility for participation in interscholastic athletics is governed by the NCHSA rules and regulations and local policies. The superintendent is authorized to develop procedures for athletic participation, including academic and behavior standards. And then those are some of the procedures that we are in the process of developing. Two, students living outside of Bramble County but admitted to GCPS under board policy forty-one thirty, discretionary admission may participate in interscholastic athletics if permitted by NCHSA rules. A three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day waiting period for athletic participation may apply to students transferring into GCPS. Family should consult the High School Athletic Association for the rules and district athletic director to determine their child's eligibility. Number three is speaking to what we are doing here, students enrolled in Bramble County schools without NCHSA athletic programs such as Bramble Early College, High School, or Bramble Academy may participate in athletics at the school to which they would be assigned according to their home addresses. Enrolled students residing outside of Bramble County would be assigned for athletic participation to the Bramble County Public School of the appropriate grade span closest to the student's home as measured by mapping software. And then the fourth one, which should be three and not four, well, it's just moving some language from the top where it talks about cheerleaders, and cheerleaders are moving down to this section. Just the condition of the student.
Very good. Any questions, board members, about either one of the policies? Okay, this is first read and we'll have them on consent agenda next month.
Yes.
Alright. The facility plan.
Yes, sir, Mr. Sheen. As promised, Dr. Winborn has for us tonight, no books, of information for a master facilities plan, supplement important.
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Superintendent, board members, tonight you have a binder in front of you. I have not prepared presentations for tonight and I know you have not had a chance to review this. So I just wanted to do a very brief overview and then make myself available to you individually to sit down and look at this product in depth. What we've attempted to do is provide a detailed projection of our facility needs years one through five, ten years, and fifteen years out. And I've included a tab for each school that has the general information about each school. And then in the introduction, there is some projections just district-wide with a couple of charts. We have all of this data electronically, so we can manipulate it and produce lots of different metrics you would like to see as, you know, visuals and that kind of thing. Again, I would urge you to reach out and schedule a meeting with me at your convenience to talk about this. There, on the surface, there may be a little confusion in thinking about how the fifteen million dollars calculates into this because year one projections do include some of the work that we're paying for out of the fifteen million dollars, okay? So I'm, again, I'm happy to meet with you, go through this in detail, talk about specific projects, how we arrived at these figures and that sort of thing. But our intent is for this to be a living document. So as we do updates, you will receive packets to enter into your binder. But I thought it would be helpful to have this just physically so you could refer to it quickly. And I can see a time that we'll be adding things in the appendices here as well. So this is a start. I think it's, it represents a lot of work on the behalf of our very talented maintenance and operations teams. So I look forward to talking with you guys more about this in the future. Any overview questions, big picture questions I can help with?
I don't have a question, but board of eight members, I do want to publicly go on record acknowledging Dr. Winborn and our maintenance team for the amount of work you've put into providing this district with a five, ten, fifteen-year projection regarding facilities. This was no easy feat, and as he's mentioned, there's a lot more that can be added. But we certainly thought this was a fun start.
Great, anybody have any comment?
I do have a question. And I guess that the question that I would have, to what extent will this information, let's say to year one, be incorporated in our budget? Because, and Mr. Day, you probably know this, historically, the budget has looked at forecasts for school district needs. So I'm trying to, and I'll certainly meet with you, I'm trying to get a handle on what in year one, I guess if that is the out year, if that's next year, what in that year is included in the budget? Or what will you be advising the county commissioners of your needs that show up in year two and the out years? And I appreciate the work that has been done and I thank you. Last year, we looked at, you had the staff that looked at the needs of the county. And you came up with the, a total list. And since then, as you say, this is a living document, we've had things that have transpired. I'd ask to see the list in totality from last year that made up the twenty-six million. And the reason for that is establishing a baseline. I'm not sure, or maybe when I meet with you, you can tell me what baseline you're using. I would think from the display of this, you sort of roll in the things that you identified as part of the twenty-six million plus things that have happened in the interim or in the meantime, and that's what we're now seeing. So at some point in time, when I meet with you, I'd like for you to be prepared to to specify the baseline that we're using going forward. I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Udi? Very good, anybody else?
Alright, yes, Mr. Rivers. Thank you. I'd like to echo with Mr. Muzi and Dr. McLean, this is fantastic. Dr. Winborn, and thank you so much for the effort and commitment.
Thank you very much. Mr. Duck, one quick second. The commissioners mentioned, and it's out there being discussed, and that's bond referendum for facilities, and as you know, the Senate would do one thing, the House would do a bond, which would take longer. But what was the figure that one of these would, round figure would give Bramble County would give? What amount?
The governor's version, which was a full bond referendum voted by the general public, I think was eleven million.
Bramble County?
The sort of the lowest Senate version was a pay-as-you-go, and that was two-point-two million would be our share to start. Pay-as-you-go, pay-as-you-go. So in other words, I think they would probably shift some money around, maybe access for their rainy day account and.
Skip a year.
So I think it possibly could be anywhere in that range. I don't, Dr. McLean, you went to, you heard probably more recent news about this.
Absolutely, it's still, it's very similar, they are still in session and they're deliberating, they're deliberating. And that is part why I continue to send these updates. I think if you watch, construction builds very closely to determine what we make in our portion of that. But you're right, all the versions are very different.
And Dr. McLean, and that's why last year, the product that was provided to the board was so fundamental to this process. We need to know where we start from as opposed to sort of just jumping in at the middle. Because if we get two million dollars, or if we get eleven million dollars, how do you prioritize that? Because you're not gonna spend all eleven at one location. There are needs throughout the county.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Day, do you have any idea how much longer our lottery money is spoken for with the county debt? Because I was trying to follow that application and like, is it forever and ever that's the way that's supposed to be? Or was it a set amount?
Well, I mean, their debt, you know, is a certain number of years, but that, and that amount is the full amount of the lottery funding for this year that's allocated to Bramble County. And the debt is quite a bit more than the amount that came from the lottery funding, so.
That's a very good question. I'm not sure I understand the answer.
Yes, sir.
There's way more debt than we're getting from the lottery. So they're gonna keep getting our lottery money to pay off that debt.
But, okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
Which was about a half million, like this year, but that application was like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, very well. Okay, um.
Thanks, doctor. Yes, sir, Dr. Winborn is pleased to be with us. We are bringing back to you this evening, gentlemen, for your consideration, the duty of action on this item, contracts for ground maintenance. We began this conversation in our last meeting, and has questions, Dr. Winborn, Charlie?
Yes, ma'am, I'm the board chair, board members, per your request, I met with our team and we did some work to try to come up with an authentic analysis of what it would cost for us to do this work ourselves. I want to stress that we took a very conservative approach to this. We tried not to pad it or fluff it or, you know, make it seem like, you know, this was done in a way that, you know, because we wanted a certain outcome. So basically, you can see, there's just some general bullets about doing this contracted services versus in-house. There's another document in here that shows the breakout for doing the work in-house. It basically assumes only two crews of grounds maintenance folks, two crews of two people. And then we would also need a full-time mechanic to serve all of the equipment during this time. Of course, what, you know, is not reflected in this cost analysis is the fact that Mr. Rivers pointed out that we would have these people available to us in the non-lawn cutting months, you know, the off grass growing season. There's still, there's still grounds maintenance to be done during that time, to be clear, but there would, those individuals would be available to our maintenance team. There are, there are a number of other challenges in just adding these crews, just from straight supervisor re capacity and hiring those folks and dealing with turnover and, again, two crews is a very small number. To think, anytime there's a rain event that occurs, it postpones the grass cutting and in effect you're kind all that time. So that's one of the nice things about contracted services is that if they don't follow the grass getting cut within that amount of time that's in the contract, we can fire them. Which I did want to make clear, I had a board member ask me about that. The contracted services, we can end that contract with those three different entities at any time if we are not pleased with their service. So I'm happy to take any questions about this.
Yes, Mr. Rivers?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Williams. I met with Dr. Winborn and we discussed this at length, appreciated the time you spent. I initially had some questions about this contract. After having talked with Dr. Winborn, he answered all my concerns, and so I believe this is the proper way to go.
Thank you very much. Mr. Udi?
Well, I did a little work alone here. First of all, instead of having two, two-man teams, you have one for, and they would hit the schools quicker and probably get around, which would cut your inventory list about a hundred and eight thousand dollars. You would only need one truck, one gooseneck trailer, you don't need an equipment trailer. You've got things like backhoes and bog cats at the maintenance center. The lead custodian, you wouldn't need, just have all four work up under Mr. Clements, he would be their supervisor. You would need like one standard mower, three zero turns at sixty-inch, and that cuts out the, I can't find the big mowers that he was talking about at the beginning, that were really expensive. One edger, two tremors, four blowers. I could go on down the list here. And some other things that I found is that there is a company in Hillsboro that sells wholesale instead of buying this retail, and that's where you save a lot of the money from. And I'm not sure if they have to go out on bids and so you could do, that's one thing. But this was just, I found this wholesale company that sells to schools and contractors. And like on the mulch, it goes from seventeen fifty to twenty dollars a cubic yard. I figured we'd need a little over two-hundred cubic yards. And the mulch company I talked to said, you'd be buying it in bulk, you buy it much, which would make that a cheaper price. So, and there again, if we had our own crew, you would have them in the off-season working with maintenance as helpers or whatever Mr. Clements needs for. So I think.
So you would be opposed to the contract and would be in favor of hiring people?
Yes, I would be in favor of putting on a four-man crew and us doing the initial costs of getting the equipment that we need. But just by doing it as one four-man crew, you could cut, like I said, about a hundred and eighty thousand of this figure here.
Yes, Mr. Rivers?
Yes, Mr. Sheen. The, one of the things that Dr. Winborn said that sort of pushed me from where I was, where you are right now, which I certainly see the merits of what you're saying, is that I try to be delicate. When you're hiring folks for this type of work, there is a turnover. And the problem would be if you had, I would think, one four-man crew, correct me if I'm wrong, and we go under, you know, losing employees or something like that, we could get behind pretty quickly. The other issue that would concern me is if, if we cut down to the bare bones, number of lawn mowers, which I agree would save us money, and then one of them breaks, so we're waiting apart. And certainly with my, I have a large yard mower, and I've certainly been down for, you know, a week or more waiting on parts. I think that could be, I think we're gonna have to have an extra mower or two to spare the ones who are in maintenance in the life. So that would be my concern, but I like your, I think your idea is imaginative, but I just, I wonder about, at the lower, lower pay scale employees, we are, we are not necessarily having career employees. So it makes it sometimes harder to retain if I can, that's.
I understand about the retention. But when we're looking at trying to save money and getting the most out of our guys, these four, when they're not cutting grass, would be doing other things in maintenance that would help out. It gives them four extra people at about the same price that we'd be paying outside for it. And I did have in there where he had some of the things, I had an extra equipment. And what I did is I went and got with a company that does this, and they told me what they would need to do with the schools.
Thank you. We got two, different sets of ideas, Mr. Mims?
Yeah, just, I have a question, sort of from a different perspective. In reviewing this, I see the three various categories, and I saw the locations that each group was supposed to address. Um, in reviewing this, I see the three various categories, and I saw the locations that each group was supposed to address. And, uh, I understand, uh, from Dr. Winburne that you can, if you don't do a place, you can eliminate. In other words, so, uh, the location in there. My question is, how about adding? For instance, I didn't see the annex in there. I didn't see the property from 811 Crescent there. So how would you go about adding them?
Well, we, we could, I, the reason we did not include the annex was because when we started, when we put this out, uh, for bid, wheels were already in motion about the annex. So I made a decision to not include that in the bids. As far as that house, I don't know. Um, some, we have had an agreement with someone to cut that grass, and I had inquired about it, but I have not gotten a response back about that.
Yeah, and if we don't do it...
Someone's been cutting the grass and, um, our maintenance guys went out there and cut a bunch of trees back that was growing sort of into the house. Our, our own people did that, but someone's been mowing.
I believe it's a neighbor there.
Is it a neighbor?
And, and that's the reason I brought that up, that's important because it's in the city limits. So you're talking about health issues and so forth.
It's fine.
Fine, absolutely, the municipality can, can fine, or cite the school district for not keeping that property up. So that's why I just wanted to know, uh, there's one thing to drop somebody off, but there's another thing to add something on. And if the annex is not disposed of, you know, it needs to be included as part of this process.
Okay, thank you. Can I have the motion one way or the other regarding this, this proposal?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we go with Dr. Winborn's original idea of contracted services for the 258-628.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
You have a second, Mr. Peace, any further discussion? Anybody? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes for one to two. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any building arms or policies?
Absolutely, yes, sir, policy 4327, under help and safety, Mr. Rivers. This was in addition to...
This is in addition to this section.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, if I can claim.
Yes.
Um, briefly, board members, uh, this is for first read. Uh, this is a policy that's developed from a, um, drug prevention subcommittee on which Mr. Udi and I represent the board. Dr. Winburne and Dr. Meyer represented, uh, central office. This is a, uh, an idea that I have emailed some of you, but I would like to suggest we can keep in our toolkit. It's based on the, uh, the policy or the program of rapid prototyping in the aerospace industry. This is where you have a small group of people with proper skillset, develop a product, in this case, the product could be a policy or something else you're trying to develop. They develop it rapidly, uh, best practices and inputs they need, but without a whole lot of extra review and meetings. They get the product into the field and it's actually tested by the users. In this case, uh, tested by the actual schools and principals. And it's, it's proven over the years to be a much, much more rapid way of affecting change. You might recall, uh, Lockheed's bunk works that Kelly Johnson, famous designer back in the 50s pioneered, which led to such airplanes as the P-38, Lightning, the, um, uh, PH Shooting Star, uh, the U-2 and the SR-71. Uh, so this, this rapid prototyping is a 21st century model in the aerospace industry, and I think it's something that we can adopt where appropriate. It's not always going to be appropriate. So this was sort of a test case. Um, we actually, uh, started this process, not really, because I, I had been doing a lot of research on this over many years, as I've been very passionate about this. But basically, a draft policy was presented last Tuesday. Um, we had a meeting with Mr. Udi and Dr. Winburne and Dr. Meyer. Um, we, we made some adjustments, incorporated comments from different committee members, and came up with a draft. Uh, we gave pre-copy of that to, uh, our board attorney, Ms. Dubison. Uh, Dr. Winburne and Dr. McLean, um, were able to, uh, provide three principals on Friday to do a sanity check. This was a elementary school, a middle school, and a, um, high school. They had some very good comments, and we actually made some changes because obviously this policy is predicated on the principals implementing. After we, um, completed that, the, uh, draft was sent out to Ms. Dubison, and I want to thank her for her prompt turnaround. She got this back Saturday morning, I believe. And, um, uh, and then, uh, Dr. McLean offered to make copies available so that we could actually do a first read tonight. So, um, I, I want to personally thank everyone who's, who's supported this process, who've gone six days from, from basically a cold start to a, a first-read policy. On this policy briefly, uh, it's, it's designed to be lean and give the principals latitude to, uh, develop their programs. And what we're hoping will happen is based on this, this guidance that you will be reading on your first read, um, the principals will use their imagination and enlist maybe a particular teacher or guidance counselor who is passionate about this, who is energetic, who wants to, to try and make this work. And following these guidelines, but using their imagination, they will develop their own programs. We asked that, uh, start of the school year, we get a s- one small paragraph that just basically acknowledges that they are aware of the policy and the basic idea, the concept of their program. And end of October, we would ask the one-page lessons learned, what worked, what didn't work. And we told the principals that if they try things and they don't work, that's just as valuable information as if they try things and they do work. So don't be afraid to innovate and try, and if, if it's, it's not effective, um, then we will learn and we will tell other principals not to try it. Um, the intent would be the, the subcommittee would read at the end of November and review the, um, the one-page reports. We would get, uh, inputs from, uh, the drug prevention coordinator, um, which we would ask Dr. McLean to appoint. That person, it would not be a very, uh, time-consuming job. We were looking for a staff member who would routinely attend the principals' meetings, and you may just ask for any comments at the end of the principals' meeting that you've tried, or any issues, or what, what's working, what's not working. And that drug prevention coordinator would simply spread the word to other principals that this seems to be working at Mary Potter, uh, or actually, excuse me, Norley Bramble, and, uh, this does not seem to be working at Buckner Sten Metal. And so we could, we could try and learn and have the principals also talking. Uh, the, in November, with the lessons learned, the input from the drug prevention coordinator, the subcommittee would then look at whether this document needs to be revised. So this would be a, a policy that we would say right now is not a finished product. Uh, we would actually be beta-testing this at the various campuses. And as the different principals develop programs that they, that things work or don't work, developing and using their own metrics, um, we would then consider revising this or putting out perhaps a, um, just a memo with, with the results of what we've seen and what's working in certain schools. So the intent is to, to grow this program. But at least we'll get a program, hopefully started, we, we will get a program started next school year. Uh, and, uh, and hopefully have it, have 17, 18 different campuses trying different ideas. And we will then, from all that, select what we think is a, a good way to go forward.
Certainly comprehensive. Comments, anybody? Thoughts? Okay, so this will be put on for the consent agenda for, uh, second reading next month.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your hard work.
I would, I would think that, of course, I haven't had the time to read these, so take some time to read, to understand all that, thank you. And, uh, well, maybe by, before the, you know, I've got some questions I can also refer to.
Sure.
To hold off. I was just concerned about, uh, there's, I haven't had an opportunity to decipher and...
It's a first one. It could be a first read next month.
Absolutely.
I, I would, I mean, that would be more beneficial from my perspective.
Okay. Is there a problem with that, Mr. Rivers?
No, so the, the, um, what I, what I was hoping to do, and I'm, I'm very pleased with the repetitive, which we've done, so I'm, I'm very happy with this kind of modeling how it's worked. The intent was if we could get this policy approved by June, so the principals can have it for the summer to start thinking about maybe who they want to delegate this to, or what ideas they have, or how they want to implement it. Um, what I, what I really don't want to have happen is, uh, for whatever reason, uh, this policy is, is given to them in August, and they really don't have time to develop a program. I, I think, I think hopefully they'll find somebody who's really eager to do this and will, will really take an interest and come up with something interesting for the students to get the learning objectives across about leading a better lifestyle, drug-free, tobacco-free, and alcohol-free. Um, so, uh, that's, that's the only thing, uh, Mr. Peace, you know, I think, uh, if we could, we, if you want to do a, a second first read in May, or if we want to perhaps do that and waive the, the second read or whatever, but if we, the target is, I would like to have this approved and, and in works by November or June for regular meetings.
Our first Ume would be a second read, then it could go to the principals that week, right? So that would be right in the schedule and give Mr. Peace the time for all of us to read, so...
And, you know, one of my things, uh, based on all of the gathering before, is we thought that we have to leave something before.
Yes.
One a month of April and, and May.
So we could conceivably do it. Yeah.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item relates to...
Absolutely. We have to have a policy, gentlemen, policy 7500 for first read, Dr. Winborn.
Uh, yes, ma'am, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is policy 7500 Work Day. There is just a, uh, minor adjustment to this policy. Mr. Perry and I, uh, brought this to you, um, after reviewing it with our attorney, um, to give some guidance around, uh, or more specificity around how to, our employees can use their compensatory time or their comp time that they accrue. So we've added this clause, in order to limit the accrual of compensatory time, employees will be required to use compensatory time before annual leave on designated annual leave days. In addition, an employee may be required to use compensatory time even though the employee is not asked to schedule leave. Um, we were running into an issue with some employees, you know, gathering many, many, many hours. And so, uh, this would be a way for them to just kind of make sure that they burn it off in advance. Make sure that we're, we're in good standing. Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir. Uh, Dr. Winburne, do, do we not have a cap on comp time?
So according to this policy, um, I believe it states...
240 hours.
240.
And that's the, that is based in law.
Law?
That is law.
State law?
Um, I believe it's part of the fairly, comes with the Fair League Standards Act.
So, you know, what we're facing is though that these employees would get up near that cap and then we're being, being forced to pay it out. And the intent really with comp time is for them to use it to take the place of leave, um, as they go along. And really, or should be encouraged to use it during that same pay period as well.
So we are, we have no leeway in that as far as the 240 hours, and, and it's aid instead of forfeit?
We cannot, um, raise that cap. We could have a lower cap and then people would have to be paid overtime, but we can't raise the cap.
And it's, it's not a forfeiture of the compensatory time, if they've reached the cap, then we pay them.
We have to pay them overtime.
It's different in federal government when I worked where you had a cap, and I think ours was 60 hours. Anything you accrued above that, you lost. So it behooves you to try and use that, um...
Yeah, no, you can't, um, no, you, you can't accrue more, but it just means that you would be getting paid overtime. So what this clarifies, um, that I think supervisors may not realize is that perhaps an employee has to work overtime this week, but you don't, next week there's a teacher workday, you don't need them, you can send them home. It's not just voluntary, you could say, I don't need you today, go home, and use that as, and use their comp time.
And if they had a project they were working on for the students and they wanted to come in anyway, just do without that?
I, I mean, I think their supervisor would say, do it another day. I, I wouldn't want to get into, because then memories fade as to who said what when, whether it was voluntary or not, so...
I guess the, the issue I would have was forcing a teacher to go home, um, when maybe there's something important for their class.
So teachers, this doesn't apply to students. It's hourly.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. Hourly.
Thank you.
With this, with this change, will supervisors get some training, and this is a little different, how it's applied?
Yes, absolutely, and we'll do a, a much better job of monitoring it as well. Okay? Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Udi, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, my question is, do we have a timeframe that it has to be taken within? Is it between each payroll, or are they allowed to carry it over? For example, when I worked for the city, we were able to carry it up to the last day of December. If we didn't use it by the last day of December, we lost it. So is there a timeframe in there? If they work overtime, do they have until the end of the pay periods?
I believe the language, Mr. Chair, you may need to help me out here, stipulates that should be encouraged to within that pay period, not required.
You can't, I, I mean, I, I guess people have, in different agencies may have seen different things, but you can't, you can't just poof, lose your comp time. You, you know, you get paid out for it. But, so, yes, I, my recollection, and I haven't looked at this in a while, is that you cannot require them to use it in this, in the, in the pay period, but we strongly encourage it. And again, some of that is on the supervisor to make sure that they use it.
Okay. Thank you. First read.
First read.
Okay, next item.
Excellent. May 1, Educator Day. Dr. Winborn, will you share with us just briefly, gentlemen? I have emailed you what our state superintendent is recommending. Let us just share with you how we are approaching this right now.
Yes, ma'am. So, uh, Mr. Perry and I, we've talked about this. Uh, currently, our plan is just monitor the, the amount of leave requests that come in for this day. Our main concern, of course, is that we have so many people that ask for leave on this day that we don't have enough substitutes to staff our classrooms, which I believe is something that we faced last year, and we, we even had to make some decis- decisions. So, um...
Just how it is.
Yeah, we, we have not enough information, but we're going to, we're going to be watching that, the requests for that date very closely, and we will keep you all informed of how it looks. That would be, that would be the trigger for us.
Board members, any questions? So, let me get a statement. We have to wait to see how many requests come in, and then we're going to be forced to make a decision towards the end of April based on that information. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, it's quite possible.
Okay. Is there any way to put out a, a cautionary whatever right now saying that we can't promise you can do that if you, you know, whatever, and we've got to have X member, we... In other words, I, the only thing I'm asking, some of us may be in support of this, some of us may be opposed to, to closing schools, and it would really be nice if we could have some way of being able to make a decision if we need to, rather than last week of April, because by then, we have no choice.
So, yes, absolutely. And we have to be very careful, though, we don't deny our employees their right to take a time off as specified in our policy for personal leave. They may, they may take sick leave and come in with doctor's notes afterwards. We just, you know, we can't anticipate, um, how they plan on taking leave for that day, if they want to.
You, you can't, you can, and I'll, this is my last question.
Yes, sir.
You can, um, you can, you can, can you put on a stipulation that, you know, if 100 teachers out of the blue decide they want to go to the beach or something? I mean, we wouldn't allow, we wouldn't allow them to do that, would we?
Well, so there, the policy says, and I'm, I'm trying to get this from memory, but you, you, the board, you, the principal with the authority of the board can deny a leave request that's not made five days in advance, okay? Or if there are not... Or if there are not enough substitutes available, okay? Now, so, the question remains, though, is how do you stop that from happening? You know, if they simply, I mean, if they don't show up anyway, you know, or they take sick leave, which, you know, we could require them to produce a doctor's note, but they can bring one. We can't deny someone to take sick leave.
Well, if they are sick.
Well, indeed, but I mean, we get...
I, yeah, but I'm just saying that you certainly can deny leave requests, and if someone doesn't show up after their leave has been denied, that would certainly be a problem.
We can prevent it for that.
Dr. McLean, might we talk about how we tried to get in front of this? Not only did we share the memo with you as board members, we shared with our principals this morning to try to share that their staff's position our state superintendent has taken. Of course, we support our teachers and their support of fighting for things that are necessary and important. We do, we want to go on record being very clear of that. I think with regard to all of the hurricane weather we've had this year and the loss of instructional time, and then some additional winter weather instructional time, we were all just asked to make sure we try to protect instructional time as much as possible. It was not about not supporting our teachers in what they feel they need to do legislatively.
Yes.
Dr. McLean, is there a way we could take a proactive approach where, and this is just a suggestion, where you issue a, a random few, you teach principals and teachers, that we support this, however, we are in alignment with the state superintendent's opinions, we don't believe we should shut down school for this? Figure out how many, how many we could afford to lose, and say, "It's our recommendation that it's fifty, that the fifty teachers be allowed to take leave and support this, though we would prefer it be on a non-instruction day, which could be based on treaty money." And we ask you to sign up, and after fifty, we would request that you not, once at fifty or thirty or forty or fifty, a hundred, whatever, once that number's reached, we just request that you not, that we have a large contention there, but that you don't have enough substitutes. Maybe we could do something like that to support our teachers, but also recognize we have an obligation to teach our children. It's just a thought.
Special issue. One last thing. Could you, could we have a teacher work day that, whatever, an optional teacher work day that day? Move one from some place to the other that would then protect instructional time maybe later in the year, and that could be a win-win?
I don't believe we have it left. Unless, I think we, we got to, you know, just make one.
We do have the testing happening in the...
And we hit graduation.
And you don't, you don't have another one yet.
You want to bet?
I believe we'll probably make one. But then I am not going yet, so. While we take those two ideas on the floor, let us play with it some, and then try to get something out. Mr. Rivers, another land truck invasion.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you.
I would suggest whatever we do, we do it as quick as possible, because one thing we heard in the news last time was the loss of people in the middle school, and the loss of parents who have to figure out what to do with their children.
In addition to the loss of instructional time.
Thank you.
Very good.
All right.
Now, we have a Mr. Chair for a financial update.
Good evening, board members. Tonight, we have a financial update as of February twenty eighth, two thousand nineteen. We're sixty-seven percent through the year. Our expenditures are within budget, and our percentages are in line. In addition to the, this financial update, you also have in your folders, that was mentioned earlier, the listing of real estate. And I just want to mention, that was a search on the county tax mapping site of all the properties that were listed. That memo looks a little strange with the different bullets, but I wanted to list all of the ways that our name is in their system. There's several different ways that Granville County Board of Education lists it, so it's a search for all of those. And so, all of the school campuses are accounted for on that list, and include all the information from the county. That last column, I just put a note in there just to kind of help you reference which, which property it was related to. So, all the rest of the columns are information directly from the county tax office. The other board travel, board travel as of February twenty eighth, two thousand nineteen, expenditures are six thousand four hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-one cents, and remaining balance of four thousand two hundred and three dollars and thirty-nine cents. So, we can see how that breaks down by board member and type of expense.
Thank you, Mr. Day. May we share with the board some reminders around budget work? It is budget season, and to see if there are any final things they have on their minds they'd like for us to include as we sort through this board. And select a full session.
So, board members, first I'd like to point to you, in your folder, you have a letter that has a highlight on the bottom is the budget timeline. This was approved by the, or agreed by the board back in January, and we need to update it, and I apologize, the original date for the budget presentation to the board, official budget presentation to the board was Easter Monday. So, this has been changed to reflect the next Monday. I contacted the county to find out if this would work with their budget timeline, and it will. So, it's, I mean, April twenty ninth, a week from what it originally was, that the budget would be presented to the board for consideration. And as Dr. McLean mentioned, we also need to schedule, if we can, another work session so that we can, if Dr. McLean can bring a draft of which we'll be looking at on the twenty ninth, on a day prior to that. So, we have, we have looked at our calendars, and we're looking at, because of spring break in the, in the month of April, it makes it a little tight, we were looking at Thursday, April twenty fifth, maybe at a four-thirty if that would work.
Board members, anybody have a problem with that particular day? I can't believe. All right, at four o'clock, did you say? Four thirty?
Four thirty. That would be financial work session on the end.
Right.
Eagle twenty fifth?
Twenty fifth, yes, sir.
Sorry, the twenty fifth, and then the twenty ninth will be the six o'clock meeting for the...
Four thirty, yes, sir, on the twenty fifth, and six P M. on Monday, the twenty ninth.
What is the six P M. to our ninth meeting?
That is to present the, for the board's consideration of the budget proposal.
We can make action, may he.
Your committee, the committee would be delivered to the county the next day.
It matters to quarters, but I would, I would not be moving that night unless we're better.
Unless we have earlier than six, we can, we certainly can.
Kind of just the opposite.
It may need to be later for missing a minute.
Can we find another date that week?
Can we, so they're not hurting them?
It does.
How that week you...
I think that, that week, Monday is Easter Monday, then the Tuesday is the light of kindness, and then Wednesday, you generally stay away from there, but, I mean, this was the Thursday, so, unless, you know, it's another time of the day or something.
What is Dr. McLean's hour?
Four, yes, sir.
Well, either way, if one of us is absent, it's going to be fine. So, that would make people... True. Okay. Is that, and that would be the only thing we would include in the budget?
Yes, if we define the budget, we'll need action on this four.
Okay, is that all we can do? At six o'clock, correct? Okay, as quick as I can, check Dr. McLean. Okay, we got it. Thank you.
Mr. Day, with regard to the budget, gentlemen, we wanted to afford you the opportunity to share any thoughts as we launch into actually preparing the budget. At our last meeting, we shared with you all the stakeholder pieces, and you all actually prioritize some pieces. We've gone in and you asked for dollar amounts, Mr. Day.
So, this is, you had this document, and I'll just kind of go quickly through it, but the first slide is what we talked about last time, which was, and Dr. Bullen has already referenced that, was the ongoing cost that we need just for our ongoing operations, salary, and benefit increases. Last year, that number was six forty-eight, and we're in the process of working on what that number is this year, but it'll be in that ballpark. And if that money is not, if any money that is not considered by, as continuation for the county would be an expansion item, and that would, to continue our ongoing operations, that would be a number one priority of funding. But, the next slide are the items that the board considered last, at the last work session to put into priority order, and these are the total cost. Last time we gave you per unit cost, and these are total costs for each of the items, and these are in the order, in this document, they're in the order that the board had put it in during that, that activity of last session. So, the first item was additional teacher positions, and based on our preliminary numbers of students and the reductions that we would be facing based on that, we're looking at about thirteen teachers, losing thirteen teachers. So, this would maintain the teaching staff we currently have, that number of teachers, those thirteen. So, that's seven hundred and forty-two thousand, and I've also added what the strategic priority, the item strategic priority. The second priority for the board was social workers, and we've got one at seventy thousand. The third priority are instructional lead teachers, and there are four at three hundred eight thousand. And then the fourth priority, additional teacher assistant positions, sixteen, this is two per elementary school, at five hundred and ninety-two thousand. The fifth priority, there was a tie by the board, a psychologist and universal breakfast, and you can see one psychologist position, and the amount from universal breakfast. I've also included in this the number, the number five, top five priorities of the state, other stakeholder groups. So, as you, as you go ahead, then these are the one percent increase in supplement, E C compliance positions. Those were top priorities by the other stakeholder groups, just so you have that information. Dual language and I D, school-based six twelve curriculum, and data facilitator, and code school were all in the top five for the different stakeholder groups. So, this is information that Dr. McLean will now use, Dr. McLean and I will use, to develop the budget, that we'll be getting a draft that you will ultimately...
And what we'd like to do for just a minute, just a minute or two, is if there's something up there, now that you've had a moment to have this since we last met, you now see some figures, you may say, "We, that, no, I'd like to see something different there," or, "I'm thinking a little different about the property." If you could just share with us.
Let me, could we just go around each of them? Just you've looked at, just, just share your thoughts, because at the end of the day, we need to make sure every board member is, is comfortable with this, because this is, this is obviously a major responsibility of the boards. We'll start with Mr. Rivers and go around.
Thank you, sir. Dr. McLean, the, as you know, I'm very concerned about our mental health crisis and it's having in our school system. My understanding is we currently have on staff two social workers, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Could you give us some guidance to, to address the problems that we are facing? What would be the minimum number of social workers that we would need to try to, try and get on top of this problem? We're only budgeting for one extra, that gives us three.
One social worker and one psychologist.
Right.
The difficulty with the psychologist piece is, I believe it's set out there...
Several months we've had.
And we didn't get one nibbled, because those individuals, we end up contracting with, so the services were provided for the children. But they make more on the medical side of the work than they do on the educational side of the work. So, we end up contracting through the medical side. Ideally, it would be optimal if this district got to a point where we had about four social workers, only elementary, middle, high, and then where we have overages, you've got that additional person. The second one we got was with a grant this year, and so we are paying for one with our, our funds, but the other was with the grant. Now, what I can honestly say, it's based on a superintendent meeting last week, and a state meeting of educators, the state of North Carolina unfortunately, is keeping very hot on the list, on the radar, of mental health. So, those grants may be available, again, from what we understand at least right now, for mental health, social workers, psychologists, SROs, things of that nature. But I agree, that is still an area that needs more integrity.
I guess from my perspective, I would, I would heed your advice, and I would like to budget for two more social workers than one to get us four. That would be my, my impetus.
We've got it. Thank you.
I'd like to defer since I'm seeing this on the budget side, so, I want to listen to everybody else talk.
Nope, that's true. Thank you. Mr. Menz?
Yes, Dr. Bullen. One of the questions that I have asked about pretty regularly, I think the board knows, is the number of teacher vacancies that we have. And when I look at the thirteen positions, my question is, if we couldn't fill all of the positions issued, and I guess having thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen vacancies, what is going to allow us to come up with thirteen additional positions? But, I know hearing from the staff that a lot of effort has been put into recruiting. The degree of success, I guess, each person has to make that determination. But, in looking at this since we last spoke, last met, one of the innovative things that I thought, and I've done some recruiting in my previous life, and I know how difficult it can be to attract folks, is what is it that we're doing to improve our recruiting capability? Not just the numbers of times we're sending staff out there, but what is it that you have to offer those that you are seeking? And to that end, I thought something that might be a service expansion that the county commissioners would look at, and something that could certainly help us get more teachers, would be to be somewhat innovative and creative, and look at what we are offering of what we might offer teachers. Could we put together some type of initiative or program whereby we look at offering childcare, helping teachers with their student loans? I mean, with housing, we talked about eight eleven and talked about housing. If a recruiter could tell a potential applicant that these are things that we're doing in Granville County to try and assist you, I think that might be something that could help us reduce the number of vacancies that we have. But candidly, seeing thirteen, when I saw that number, and it wasn't the amount of money, it was the number of people. I mean, we're talking about right now, at the rate we're going, we would almost have close to thirty vacancies next year if we do the same thing that we've been doing the previous, the previous couple of years.
I love the thinking around the innovation, because if I'm going to compete with Durham in the late, one of the first things I have to do is, I know both of them are trying to increase their supply, and guess what that's going to do to us? And guess what that's going to do to us? Supplement on one of the charts, I'm trying to remember this day, which stakeholder group said, we want more teachers, but it's with the supplement included. Because I think they really understand that we need to be able to compete to get some of the best. But I love some of those ideas about the housing and childcare. But we need to do some research and that and potential costs.
Well, I'm just thinking about the, if we put on a, or take off a county commissioner hat. Mike Phelps, the county manager, knows about Board of Education budgeting. And, you know, they understand that we have vacancies. So the idea that they're going to give us more money when, and, and we talk about reducing class size, had we had those individuals this year, we probably could have reduced class size. But the real key is that we haven't been able to attract those folks. So I would think when you talk about service expansion, you look at the innovative, creative ways that you can convince the county man, county commissioners that, listen, you invest dollars here, you can help us improve, uh, our ability to attract teachers. So now, let me just say one other thing on another area. And I've heard, uh, Mr. Rivers, and I really appreciate, uh, the idea of the social workers and mental health. And we just heard about the community health assessment earlier this evening. And mental health and drugs is obviously, uh, something that's concerned throughout the community. But you know, if I was going to try to sell a service expansion, and that might be what we're doing with county commissioners, if we're going to look to increase the numbers of social workers, I would look at what is the deliverable that we expect? What is going to be at the end of that rainbow? If we're going to increase social workers, I would expect the superintendent to come back at the end of next year and say, listen, because of this, we have been able to reduce the, the issues in our schools. We've had fewer students that we had to send to Phoenix Academy. I mean, there needs to be something that we can tangibly say that we get as a result of increasing. Just to say that we want three or four more social workers and not have that deliverable, uh, I think would make it a stretch to get something like this funded.
Thank you. Excellent.
Great point. Mr. Ute?
I just have one little piece that I made. That number thirteen is a very fluid number. As we would fill a position, somebody else would resign. So it wasn't like there was any one position that just stayed open. I think I may have had a low number, one or two of those, but the rest were, mama, you get two or three filled, you get two or three resignations or two or three births of a baby and then they're not coming back or two. So it, it was this revolving door. Am I correct?
Correct.
I'm not mistaken. I just wanted to clarify.
Can I say one thing to that for the, those teacher positions? But, so when we look at our projections for student numbers for next year, it looks like we might be, um, cut and we stay by about thirteen teacher positions. So these are existing thirteen teacher positions that we currently have this year that we would be asking for county money to maintain.
And I understand that, but one of the things I've heard the county commissioners ask, weren't all the teacher positions funded? And if they are funded, you know, it sort of makes it difficult for us to say that we need you to fund an additional thirteen. You're saying that we're going to lose thirteen positions.
From state funding. And so this would reduce class size because if we lose students, we have fewer students and we maintain that number of teachers, then we are still reducing class size.
I, I, I want one to make this, my question is where are you going to get the teachers?
Well, well, one thing that, that the legislative stuff that you sent us, there was something in one of those that there's a bill that apparently has got real strong support on both sides that, uh, would allow teachers who have retired to be able to come back and work and not lose their retirement. So a teacher could, at one point in time, they use the figure to make seventy thousand dollars. Well, if that were to happen, Mr. Mims, I, I really, and, and they can be hired for Title I schools. I mean, I really think that there would be a bunch of folk who are good teachers right here who would go back to make seventy thousand dollars or whatever. I mean, you would make, what, what was it, like thirty or forty thousand dollars to do this?
Thirty thousand.
Whatever. Well, and it appears to be some pretty strong support, like duh, why haven't we done this a decade ago? But that's got some real possibilities.
And let's not forget the benefits that we're slated to lose in the, is the next year. And we're talking about reinstating, health insurance, some other things. So we, we, there's some pieces there, but I agree with Mr. Mims. Let's take a look at some things we can do and argue to, to make it a little bit sweeter, make the party sweeter. Thank you for that.
Mr. Ute?
I concur with Mr. Mims. That's what my complaint was. I think it would be a hard thing to, in line item, be hard to say all as far as the positions we have open now, which I'm not going to go into that. I think you know it pretty well. But I would just ask, if we don't get the teaching positions, maybe we could look at asking for some of those in S R Os. If I'm giving one wide item, maybe we might be able to switch it to another.
Yes, sir. Uh, I thought from the mental health side of things, I, I, you know, we talk about, uh, social workers and psychologists. Our population gets to be more and more needed in the mental health area than ever before. That's going, I mean, those are children that, that makes our system what it is because we have to serve them. And, and if you don't have qualified, capable people to do that, of course we lose a lot of students that way. So, you know, mental health sort of raises a topic on my, as a, so if we can get more social workers or psychologists that we can afford to pay that work for us instead of we work for them. And they are, they're worth their time and practice.
Uh, I basically am not going to pick out one thing because I, I agree with all of you. You know, and it's a question of here, there, or everywhere. Uh, the couple of things I want to say, uh, one, at some point in time, uh, replace, trying to replace people after we've been cut by the state because of a reduction in, in enrollment, at some point in time, the question is, how much can the county pick up of funds that have been cut because of class size and so on and so forth? Does that make sense? And, and second, I, I, the one thing I, I throw out is that, which hasn't been mentioned, obviously, I would like to see those kind of programs and practices that are, that are not terribly expensive that could help us recruit kids to come back to this school system would be something that I think would be important. Code school, uh, I D, some of those things that, you know, kids in other school systems get, but they're not getting those in any of the charter schools. And to be able to, you know, get some of those as new approaches, uh, I think would be, be really, really helpful. So that's the thing I would mention. Okay? Good. Thank you, everybody. Okay, the, uh, next item, I believe, is the item about the unexpired term of board members, Board of Education members. Board members, we need to make a decision, uh, and I would hope we would do, be able to do this this evening, to come up with a process, and we do have a policy. Would, um, Stan, would you just read that?
Yes, sir. Policy code twenty-one fifteen, unexpired term fulfillment. All vacancies in the membership of the Board of Education caused by death, resignation, or otherwise will be filled by a person appointed by the remaining members of the board to serve until the next election of board members, at which time the remaining unexpired term will be filled by election. Any person appointed to fill a vacancy must reside in the same district as the departing board member. And then it goes on to say that we will present each retiring board member an appropriate certificate of appreciation for service on the board.
Great. Do you have a second? Comment? Any?
So just this, um, follows state law, which is referenced there. And there is not a particular process that is prescribed. I understand that last time you took applications, um, and that is a, a common and, and practice and you could certainly do it the same way this time. The only thing that's different about Granville is that the, um, whoever it is needs to live in this District One.
Mr. P, you've been through, I think you're the only one that's been through this. Can you tell us what you went through and how it worked?
Yeah, uh, we, we had, uh, I don't know if it's the application sets, that's people we had, uh, people that interested writers and just state why they would like to become a member of the board. Then they got interviewed and I don't remember us having any specific questions, uh, that might be something that we need to do. So that, you, you know, the candidates would be asked the same questions because if you, you know, do a random, you might get, you know, some weird stuff.
And I will just note that all interviewing, all selection is all open session. There's, there's no closed section aspect to this.
And I think the last time we did this, I think we had four candidates.
I was going to say, how many did you have?
I think it was four. It's been a while.
Okay. Comments? Yes, Mr. Ute?
How did y'all get the information out to people to know about? And the reason I ask because I had one person in that district that confronted me. And I told him I didn't know what the process was right then that they would go through. So my question, if this person is interested, um, how would we get this information out so that people there wouldn't be able to come forward?
That's a very good question.
That we would use the same premise we do with anything, newspaper and websites, stuff like that.
I mean, that would be my suggestion, just you can meet your odds.
So with, with Mr. Smith's term, how many more years did he have left?
He's up in twenty-twenty.
And so we, so basically this is filling until?
The next election.
The next election.
And see, that raises a question. The next election, if, if, is what happens in, you know, the school board seats primarily. If two people won, weren't run, whoever wins the primary wins. So the quest, but you don't take office until December. So that means that the seat, if I'm not incorrect, that would, that person would stay in the seat for a year, roughly a year and a half.
Yeah, I mean, they would be until?
Till the swing?
Yeah.
Just wearing him, which is about a year and a half.
Something like that.
Yeah.
But they would win, I mean, they would have to be elected in eight, four, eight, four years.
I think it's March this, this coming year. So, or if we selected someone who decided to run, uh, for the seat, that would probably, whatever, but it would make it easier. But that's, you know. Comments? Mr. P?
Mike just mentioned that, uh, Mr. Austin never had an opposition in two times.
Yeah, that's going to be, that's going to be, yeah. Do we, um, do we have to put a deadline on when the person would be expected to start?
I would almost think right now you're looking at least, what, two months before we even get all that accomplished. And then we take July off, so potentially they would start by August, on a, on a good day that we get everything accomplished.
Okay. Other comments? Yes, sir.
For, uh, Mr. Richardson, that, not exactly the topic, but similar. How are we coming on the, um, term, uh, redemption?
So I heard back from an attorney from the Department of Justice on, was it Thursday? And she, uh, you know, so I explained what we wanted to do. Um, she has questions about when the last time was that we redistricted and went through the reporting process, which you did in twenty thirteen. Luckily, I had those files because my office had handled that. And so I was able to email that to her that day. So I have, if I don't, so she just said she would get back to me. So if I don't hear from her, I have, by a week from when I talked to her, which I think was Thursday, I was going to call her again.
I think, uh, just, uh, if the board approves, I think there, there, we are trying to get this through the legislature this year so that the next election we can start. So if there's any possible, possible attempts, that's, we would appreciate it.
Okay. Mr. Richardson?
Can I make a motion?
You certainly may.
I like the idea of, uh, before you make your motion.
The only thing I want is for whoever comes before us, that someone in the county office verifies that they do live in that district, a good one. That has to count, I would imagine.
Good.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept applications of some sort, um, for a month. Then they report back to us in May who we have to set up interviews and then we'll make a selection sometime by the end of May.
Thank you. Second. If we motion, then we have a second. Further discretion? Yes, sir.
Um, since we have the budget, uh, and we have a thing going forward as far as schools and the like, is that optimistic? I mean, that's going to be, we can say we had four or five candidates, that's talking, you know, extra meetings to have, um, plus we got the school, closed the school year and the like. So I'm just, I'm just wondering if that, if that's optimistic.
Yes, sir.
I'm of similar thinking about the optimism, uh, because I haven't heard exactly what the interview process will entail. Will that include all board members or majority of board members or?
All board.
So trying to get five or six people together three or four times, if we were that fortunate to get three or four people to apply between there and the end of May, I think is optimistic at, at, at best. The idea of not putting a deadline on it by the end of May, I could perhaps support if there is no deadline. But if you're going to say you do it between here, between there and the end of May, I, I'll vote against that because with travel and other events coming up and so forth, I think that is just crunching us too much.
Mr. Richardson, yes?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to note one thing. You can do it on interviews in a regular board meeting. And I would say that you, you want some, to select someone who has, first Monday's free, second Monday's.
First Monday.
First Monday's free. So you could do it on the first Monday. Presumably all the candidates would be there.
Four o'clock or something.
But you're saying that's the first of May?
Yeah.
You don't have, I'm just saying, you know, scheduling wise, you would, you want all the candidates to be for your first Monday.
Well, that's fine, but that's still the first of May, which is one month from right now.
Let's, uh, but would you be willing to accept an amendment that, uh, do the first part and then leave the selection open?
Not any further than June, because if not, when we talk about this in August, September, October.
Would, is the end of June something that we, we?
Gosh, of course we could.
I think the end of June, this is something that we need to do. And, and, and we can do it all at one time. I mean, we don't have to have, we'd have four candidates or three candidates. I don't see that happening separate session.
And I don't know that we need to talk to each other in front of them. They were probably married to them for a year and a half.
They'll probably get elected from that district.
And that becomes the voters' choice, I don't get it.
Well, that's, what have we done here?
I say we cross that bridge when we get to.
All right. So the motion on the floor, would you please repeat it, Ms. Edwards?
Mr. Richardson made a motion to accept applications of some sort and report back in May and Board of Education make selection and make a decision at the end of May.
Okay, so that is the motion and we have a second.
And then did you accept amendment?
And then did you accept amendment to end of June?
I mentioned that in.
I would be fine as long as it was by the.
All right. And would you accept that, Mr. P? All right. So we have an amended motion then. Anybody need to have that repeated just for clarity? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I don't know what the process is. I know some dates, but I don't know what the process is.
Okay. All right. So the vote is five to one. Okay. We will now take a ten-minute break prior to closed sessions. All right? Ten minutes. Oh, do I still need all that stuff?
Yeah, we will need a motion to close the closed session, but I thought Mr. Richardson has it in front of him.
I was trying to.
Very good. Thank you.
We can do the motion after the break. It's okay.
You can.
That's, wait a minute, let's go ahead and get that stuff. Would you please? Motion two.
I make a motion that we go to closed session for some of General Statute forty-three, three, four, eighteen. Point eleven, A one, A three, and A six to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under GS one fifteen C three twenty-one, to consider matters related to initial employment of individuals, and to consult with the Board of Church to preserve clock three.
All right. We've heard the motion, is there a second? We have a second from Mr. P. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. We are in, we are taking a break.
We'll get a sign.
She's actually feeling happy to be able to read us. That was worth trying. What did you think on that? Yeah, maybe in there. You played what?
No, no, no.
As long as Dr. McLean don't drive, it'll be okay.
That's our secret.
Maybe that'll help your voice. She said you have a playing beer pong in the hallway.
He should know what's in there.
I just said as long as Dr. McLean, you're right.
Mr. Ute, that was our secret.
Oh, like a beer pong in the hallway?
No!
All right. Cut this out. Are you ready? We're on T P's.
I know you will.
Motion to approve certified personnel as recommended? Second. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the list of classified personnel as recommended?
Second.
Second. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. I believe that's it from, from closed session, correct? All right. Anything else on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
We had an interview with the prospective teachers. The board had a prospective teacher scholarship in last week, one of those days. It's a. And I think on that list there were two people named, and we interviewed four, and there was a question about whether we could afford to deal with it to the board. And it was, of my opinion, that we could do that. And then the two names show up on the list, and I failed to remember the third person's name.
Couldn't find out for us.
He should know. Dr. Mike was on the committee.
What is that? Do you have a copy of that?
I don't have this on the table.
You have, that's a copy too. That's in the folder.
So you want the third one out of the case, correct?
Yes.
You, you're committed to prove that.
I think he's moving for us to make sure we can take care of that third one, and add the third child. We can financially afford that.
That was the concern.
Miss Day? Miss Day?
We can, we can financially.
Yeah. Consulting. Yes. I mean, I think within the H R.
And these scholarships are for people who will come back here to teach.
Potential teachers?
That's correct.
Yes.
And they come back.
They don't have to pay the money back.
If they, if they, only had to pay the money back.
So do we need a motion to approve these three? I don't think so. Okay. Good enough.
How much are we talking about?
How much? How much?
How much is that?
Sixty-two hundred.
Each per candidate?
And for how long?
So it is, that amount, sixty-two hundred dollars, is paid over four years to a candidate. It starts out, I can't recall off the top of my head, but it starts off with, say, eight hundred dollars. Then the sophomore year, they get twelve hundred. Their junior year, they get two thousand. Their senior year, they get three thousand. So the longer they stay in school, the more they, is dispersed in them. They're paying for it. They'll repay if they don't work for us.
We should have that situation.
How long? Three years.
It looks as if they're consulting on the name. We can't make certain to get the name of the board as good.
Yeah, we're good.
With us adding the third person, we have finally an H R budget.
All right. Anything else?
I do have one other question. Since this is the first of April, next meeting, next scheduled meeting is the first of May. Attorney Dubus, will you, at that time, have any information on appraisals of the various properties that are being looked at?
So I don't have anything new to report. We're awaiting the report for the Creedmore Annex.
Right.
I have, tomorrow, I am meeting with a gentleman that Eva, his firm referred to me, his name?
Al Rager.
Al Rager. And so I'm going to have lunch with him and talk about seeing if he's interested in becoming, working for us as a consultant basis for all of these studies, and I'm going to try to get someone who can, see if he knows someone that can appraise the Toller property. Because the man that's doing the Creedmore Annex for us said he does not feel equipped to be able to do that school property. He's never done a school before.
And did you guys decide whether to go ahead and get one for the South Granville House?
That's what I was about to ask. That was my third one.
It needs to be.
You need to do that too.
It needs to be done.
And I think, I told the superintendent can do that under her own authority.
I'll get the guy that's still in Creedmore to do the house because that would be only like a quarter dollar.
Yeah.
Do we have any idea what the intention of us receiving that property was? Like, was it just because?
The intention was when the lady passed away, she donated the house to us with the intention of it being used by teachers coming into the area that could not find a place to stay.
They could find that, well.
That was the intention of.
Because that's going to change a whole lot of stuff if that was the intention.
Yeah, we better check that title and see.
So their family is a member of the.
That's what the family said. I don't know how it was written up, but that's what they said.
Do you have a sense of like what decade we're talking?
She died.
It was my first year here.
Yeah, so she died within the last decade.
Oh, okay. Jim Randt helped me out on the last one, maybe he'll help us find this one too.
But that's what the family said in the meeting.
Do you think there's, is a file that's somewhere here? You looked? Okay.
I believe Dr. Kletz did this.
It might be at Jim's firm.
Yeah, maybe.
Because, I mean, it would be.
Or they could have called it before you.
It would be interesting because the word education is not, is not in the rental property business.
Well, but I wonder if it was with the thought of kind of what we were talking earlier of attracting teachers here, if that was just kind of the thought, and everybody thought it was a great idea, and said, yeah, bring it on, and then just never thought of the consequences of it. I think you're right. We don't need to rely on.
We have to go by the policy of, of the rules.
All right. One of the dates that we have this month, and we did set a date for another board. Go ahead, go through the dates if you.
Absolutely. Your work session has now been set for April twenty-fifth, was it Thursday? April twenty-fifth at four thirty. And then April twenty-ninth, which should be on your budget sheet. Budget will be presented to the board at, for your vote at six p.m. at the, Mr. Ute, if you can.
And I meant to say this when we were talking about the budget earlier, because there was some discussion about the timeline. The statutory timeline is the superintendent has to present it to you by May first, you have to turn it around to the commissioners by May fifteenth. Now, you've mentioned something, that county has its own budget timeline, so I don't want to interfere with that, but just legally, that's the, those are the deadlines. I cannot come on the twenty-ninth, may not need me, you can decide that later if you need somebody else or.
All right. Anything else?
The only other thing, Mr. Ute, I'm sorry, Mr. Ute, the only other thing is an event that we did not have last year. You know, we had Evening of Excellence last year with straight A's, perfect attendance. We will be honoring some adults or relatives again, and we're going to do a little something new with teacher of the year. So if you'll please put that day on your calendar, because our board members stand at the red carpet that evening, it will be at South Granville, and every child and every adult shakes your hand for the Evening of Excellence. The Night of Kindness, which is brand new this year, is our culminating character event. And I think our chair will be bringing greetings on behalf of the board that night, but we would just love to have you there with us that night, the Night of Kindness.
What, what, what's the date?
The twenty-third of April is the Night of Kindness, and May second is the Evening of Excellence, and it's right on the last page of your agenda tonight. We have canceled the CTE tours for this group, but there may be some other groups, like our Mary Potter Design Team, asked to see what we offer in high schools right now. So we might be able to get it going for them.
Scheduling at this time of year is just tough. There's so much going on, and you can only do some, I'd like to see it, but not right now.
Well, we'll do it another time. And the young lady at the School Boards Association, we've left several messages with them, several emails, she's just not gotten back with me about the May seventh and May ninth date, remember for board training on evaluation instrument. She's just not gotten back with me, and I understand she was in Philadelphia last week, and she'll be back in office this week.
Dr. McLean? I'm scheduled to be getting back in town on the twenty-third. I don't know what time. I will check, and I'll let you know if I'll be available that evening. I'll try.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Just one question. Do I? Dr. McLean, have you had a chance to speak with Ms. Davidson about the tour? Or you have had an interview then with the rental?
We did, we've actually spoken with the principal. We spoke with Ms. Jefferson. I think we think the policy is clear. I think the policy has been expressed clearly. I just don't think it is a very popular response, if I can be honest.
It wasn't questioning the policy, it was just, was it?
I don't believe so. Dr. Wood, what was our response? Do you remember us talking with them about that? The issue was that they are current employees and it just muddied the war with the way it was written.
Well, I'll be back in touch with the panel, just later. No, I won't say anything about the discussion other than the tutoring, what's like that, if they have to pay the. But that's all it was. He was just asking, is there any way? Because he understood the policy, and he says, I agree with the policy. But he was just saying, is there anything we all can do to just help us get the kids tutoring here after? That's all I'll do. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Want to stay online?
We not, we not made it.
Mr. Ute?
It's before tip.
It's before tip. Hurry! Mr. P, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Isn't it nice to end a, end a meeting actually laughing?
Thank you to remember everything.
It's a snutter.